Call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please, Lisa.
Mrs. Slippa?
Here.
Ms. Burnett? Mr. Amato?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Merritt?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Dr. Pickering?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to make note of executive session for June 27, 2022, for personnel and real estate. August 15, 2022, personnel. And August 15, 2022, for contract negotiations and personnel. So at this time, we will have anybody who would like to speak with regard to the agenda, please come forward. I will start with Amy Oviot because she signed up.
My name is Amy, whoa, that's really loud. Amy Oviot, I have three kids in the school district. There's some four items on the agenda that I'd like to discuss with cost, and perhaps maybe we could use that cost towards other things. First is the new door for the ISC Center at $85,315. The Step-by-Step program costs a total of $491,815. In addition, when a principal is absent at any of the training in the agreement, the school district will pay $4,000 per day for the Step-by-Step consultant to reteach this material. This is simply another tool to assess our kids, to create more small groups on top of other small groups. At the committee meeting last week, I heard teachers say that this was a program that they did not need or want. These teachers know my child better than any program and anybody on the board. I trust those teachers. Sapphire costs $120,000 a year, must sign up for a five-year contract, total of $600,000. In the eight years, I have never signed into Sapphire. My daughter used it last year a lot to check grades to the point of obsession, and I put an end to it. I talked to many parents. Some said they use it. Some say they never do. Some say they hate it. Some say they only check it for grades. K through two doesn't use it because they don't use grades. Special services do not use it for their IEPs because they have a different IEP writer that they use. If it will save us $120,000 a year, I can email or call a teacher if I really need to get in touch with them or if I'm really concerned about my child's grades. That's the way it was done for decades, and we seem to do just fine. Future readiness. What is the cost of this program? And it's yet another program to monitor my child. Aren't PSSAs, keystones, and maps enough? So much time is taken out of our children's learning for the day to do these, to put on these, to put on screens for monitoring programs. What should our funds be spent on instead? Well, it came to my attention that we don't have working phone systems in the classrooms at Neeson Hill, MAMS, and MASH. That's been down for months, and it's extremely alarming knowing that I have a child going into the middle school and one into the high school. If there is an emergency in the classroom, how is the teacher supposed to call for help? This is something that needs to put on the things to handle priority list before school starts. I hear textbooks are not available in all grades, all classes, and all schools. Some of our teachers are told to make paper copies or simply download the book to another electronic. That's unacceptable. Our children and our teachers deserve textbooks. I don't want my child staring at a screen all day. Third, smaller classrooms. When the district was getting paid to keep classrooms small via the class size reduction program, they made it a priority, and it was important. But that program is due to expire, yep, in 2022. So now our class size doesn't seem to be that important. When you ask all of our parents who are pulling their kids out of our district and sending them to Seton or Calvary, their number one reason, class size. But it's not important. I had first thought 15 teachers left last year. To find out it was 31 was absolutely devastating. And a nurse, a nurse at the high school that all the students loved. We already have a nurse issue at First and Second District. This is very concerning. My daughter was deflated, as was I, to learn three of her teachers that had resigned. Three teachers that my two boys will never have a chance to get. Sorry. She was very upset to learn that her Spanish teacher resigned as well. We aren't losing teachers. We are losing mentors and role models. These people are irreplaceable. We lost our German teacher as well, due to resignation. And as a yet, that position has not been filled. Our teachers are emotionally and mentally exhausted. They have no support, and more and more is being asked of them. I loved it when the kids come in from schools to give updates during the board meetings. Why don't our teachers do this as well? Their input matters to our students and to parents. As a parent, nothing gives me more happiness than when my child loves her teachers. And you can see the inspiration and confidence the teachers give your child. Like I said, my sons won't be able to have three of the teachers that resigned. But I want them to have the same positive experience my daughter did. Her middle school, and especially her eighth grade year, was the best she's ever had. She came home excited, spoke of her teachers, spoke of what they did, and it made me so happy. She cried the last day of school, knowing three of them she would never, or she cried knowing that she would never have any of them again. That's how well she liked them. Those are damn good teachers, and we're losing them. And one year, three resigned. In addition to that, one moved up to the high school. And she says all the time, I hope I get to have that teacher again. And I told her, I hope you do too, and I hope my boys do. We're told to be encouraged and stay encouraged, but for what? Larger classrooms, lack of substitutes, exhausted teachers, wasteful spending, and teachers that are resigning at an alarming rate. What's there to be encouraged about?
Is there anyone else to speak regarding tonight's agenda? We'll move on then to approval of minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following minutes: the regular board meeting of June 27, 2022, and Committee of the Pool meeting of August 15, 2022. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Jeff? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And curriculum. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following plans: ATS I plans for Meville Area Middle School and Meville Area Senior High School. And you can see the attachment three. Comprehensive plan for 2021 through 2024, attachment four. Induction plan, Chapter 49, attachment five. Professional development plan, Act 48, attachment six. And gifted education plan assurances, 2021 through 2024, attachment seven. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Holly and Ryan.
No, I have Jeff.
Oh, was that Jeff? I'm sorry. Thanks, Jeff. Questions or comments?
Questions, like several. Okay. Comprehensive plan, which was attachment four. Induction plan, attachment five. And the gifted plan, which is attachment seven. Okay? I know there's quite a bit of reading. I've read almost all of them entirely. But one thing that stood out to me in each one of them, and she can pull it up on there as well. Each one of them shows a 28-day waiting period from the time it's presented to the board for public review. And I'm trying to figure out where the 28 days has been on those three. I mean, it's in there. Induction plan has 28 days mentioned.
They were.
They're on the website.
They were on the website.
They were on the website.
Yeah, they're on the website.
We put them on the website.
Where?
Under the curriculum department.
Under curriculum.
Yeah, they put it there.
Okay, I did not see them there. But I mean, if you're saying they're there, they're there. And my other question was for the ATS I. What is PAYS?
The Pennsylvania Youth Survey.
Youth Survey, okay.
We do that biannually, every two years.
And then on the comprehensive plan. If I go back to, I think it was November, we talked about the survey that was going to be entered into the schools, the NAACP. But I see we're making references to the NAACP survey in the comprehensive plan.
We are saying that that was part of the data we used. So as information we got, we use the data. We add information for people in the community. We have meetings. So we're just saying that that was also one part of the data set that we used.
Okay. That's it. Okay.
Any others? All in favor?
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries, six to one. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Sapphire software subscription order for a period of July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2027. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. Second?
Aye.
Holly? Questions or comments?
I do, again. Now, I do know that Amy had spoken to some of these, but I'm not familiar with Sapphire. I've never used it myself. I spoke with my daughter. I asked her. And she said, oh, no, Dad, you can't get rid of that because that is where I check my grades. I said, okay, what else is it used for? Well, kids who forget their locker, combination, it's there. But I also, I did my little survey on Facebook just to see what kind of comments were there. Majority of them, some of them loved it, some of them didn't like it, some have never used it. But I'm just wondering, if we're going into a five-year commitment to them, do we have the right software that's in place? Because I thought that this was going to be, if I go back to her committee meeting, Mr. Washington, we were talking about a one-way communication. We've been doing that for a long time. We want to go to two.
So let me straighten that out.
Wait, wait, I want to ask my question. So are we sure that Sapphire, at the tune of the $120,000 a year, is the software that we want based off from what it will do? Or are we just going to go another five years? Or are we looking at something else that may be a little more user-friendly to the parent, teacher, student? And I don't want to see us committing to a five-year contract that we can't get out of down the road if something better comes along. And that's my question, so.
So, okay, so your question is, are, do we think this is a good program? Absolutely, we think it's a good program, Kevin, bar none. You're looking at it from one perspective that we've added on the parent piece. That is our student information system. If we were to get rid of that, our entire district would go down, including all the information we keep on kids, how we get them. It does everything from not only keeping grades. You're just looking at it from one perspective. Parents, I heard you say some parents may not use it. They may not, because we're adding a parent portal to it. That's what we talked about, in order to increase parent engagement on there. But in terms of not just grades, all of our student information. When I get called from Harrisburg at 2 o'clock in the morning, that's where I go to pull up that information so that I can get police to a household, right? That information is vital to what we do. It's the backbone of our information system. So that's why it's so important. This is just a five-year renewal. We've been using it for five years without any problems, any complaints. The only thing we've added, which we were using separately, was Blackboard to communicate with parents. So the idea was to bring it together on the one system, which would increase our improvement of communication with parents. So this, the idea of this piece is where we do all of our grading, where we keep all of our student information. We're going to be required to have a student information system.
It's our scheduling system.
It's our scheduling system. It's everything.
Our PIMS.
Enrollments, it's our PIMS, it's everything.
State reporting, all our state reporting.
Our state reporting comes out of that. So it's not just a parent communication. It is everything that we do that's required for us to do to keep track of in the school system.
And if I could add, Mr. Washington, that the notification system that we voted on in June to add to take the place of Blackboard was actually cheaper than Blackboard.
And gave us more functionality to communicate with parents. So that's what we were doing. We're merging them. But I think if we got rid of this piece of it, we'd be struggling.
Okay, okay. No, I mean, I'm glad to hear that there's more than just what I've been told.
Yeah, I think.
And that's the, and I'm glad that we're on.
I think it's dangerous to go out on Facebook and take opinions. Not just you, Kevin, but I'm just saying that everybody's just reading opinions on things. This has been the backbone of what this system has been using for years, from registration to grading, to our PIMS requirements, to everything. In fact, that Amy brought it up, I would like to see us roll this into special ed because it wasn't as friendly to special ed when it first started out. That's why we did use a different system. That, because it wasn't as friendly as the IEP writer. But the idea is, if you look at a lot of districts, they are using that for the IEP writer. And our goal is to hopefully migrate that into the system as well, thinking long-term, so that we can get rid of yet again another system. One of the things that when I came here, and I hate to get on my soapbox, is that we went out and got software, and my team will tell you, to speak with different things. Primero Edge for food, this for transportation, that for Sapphire. And my question was, why isn't it all in one place? Why is it not all in one place? And for the last eight years, I've been trying to migrate everything to one place so that everybody in the district is going to one place to get information. I tell you what, Kevin, I get calls from Safe to Say, and these guys will tell you, my principals will tell you, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, I need that system to go in right away so I can dispatch police to where they need to be. So it's a very valuable system in what we do to meet the needs of kids.
Thanks, Sean.
Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Step-by-Step Learning LLC Services Agreement. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Who was that?
John.
John, thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff.
Can I ask one question on this?
Questions or comments?
Just a quick one.
Sure.
I saw a date in there, 2035, 2036. They're holding the data. Is that a typo? Or is that correct?
2030.
They'll have our passwords and data till 2035 to 2036.
That might be a typo. We have to look at that.
Meeting, Kevin, what, they hold our data?
Yeah. I thought it was an awful long period of time.
Yeah, I think that might be a, that might be a typo. That's got to be a typo. And I'll have Amy double-check that, Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay, that's got to be a typo.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Holly, would you do extracurricular for us, please?
Excellent. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following traveling request for the Meville Area Senior High School cross-country team, Hershey, Pennsylvania, on September 23 through the 24th, at a cost to the district of $250. And then again, Cortland, Ohio, on October 8, 2022, at a cost to the district of $320. And I so move.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Educational technology, Ryan, please.
Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby accepts the following grants: Job Training and Education Programs grant, what, an ARM, $35,000. Remake Learning Little Tugboat Grant, $32,250. Yes, sorry.
Thank you. That's all right. And a second?
Second.
John, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Building and grounds, Brian, please.
Approval of a change order resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves change order number GC1 with regards to the door security project at the Instructional Support Center, changing the completion date to December 19, 2022. And I so move.
And a second, please.
Second.
Kevin? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jeff, would you do food service, please?
Sure. Resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the inclusion of Meville Area Senior High School in the community eligibility provision, and I so move.
And a second?
Aye.
Holly, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Jeff, if you do transportation, too, please.
Result that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the Schedule K460 diesel fuel bids for the Cochran and Meville attendance areas for the 2022-23 school year, and I so move.
And a second, please.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Jeff, back to you for finance.
Result that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following financial activities: The Treasurers' Report for June and July, Financial Statements for July and August, Payment of Bills for July and August, and I so move.
Second.
Kevin?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Then I probably won't get an answer. But when you're looking down through, I'm believing it was the, both for June and July, under, well, the two reports. It was $12,000 in voided checks that had come back through. And I'm just curious as to why we'd have such a large dollar amount. One was $11,000 something for June, $1,000 for July. Maybe just look into seeing why.
I'll look into that. I'll check with the business officer.
You said it was $11,000 in June. I'm sorry, Jim.
Yeah, it was $11,000 something in June and $1,000 something for July.
Okay.
Just kind of seemed, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Result that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the day-to-day professional substitution rate of $150, and I so move.
Second.
John, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves Timothy M. Sennett as Solicitor of Crawford Central School District for the 2022-2023 school year, and I need a motion.
So moved.
I heard Brian, and was it Holly?
Holly.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves James Abelbaum, D.O., and Casey Stover, P.A.C., to perform the district's mandated physicals for the 2022-2023 school year at the rate of $100 an hour. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin?
Kevin? Second?
Second.
No.
Thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby accepts the AASA grant in the amount of $10,000, and I need a motion. John, thank you. Who was the second? Jeff, thank you. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the revision to the Administrative Compensation Plan Act 93 agreement? And I need a motion. Holly, thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors of Crawford Central School District hereby approves the following personnel schedules: A, B, C, D, E, G, I, and M. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Kevin, and a second?
Second.
John? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Madam President.
I just, I just want to say that, I just wrote a little note here. I don't typically speak at this. But reinventing and restoring what was revealed during the pandemic is the vision for the 22-23 school year. I've said that before as we were making our way through the end of the school year. The pandemic provided us with the opportunity to look at things in a new light. Some things need to be restored, like the key components of learning. Other things need to be reinvented, such as moving from school-centered to learner-centered education. In the current, in the current work of the Partners in Education, an organic dialogue has surfaced about the general decline currently going on in the public spirit and civic disengagement. The seeds of discourse sowed by individuals signal a growing culture of self-enclosed individualism. How do we rebuild the social fabric that boosts a sense of common purpose in our society? In the book, When You're Wondering, When You're Learning, Mr. Rogers' enduring lessons for raising a creative, curious, caring child or kid, the author speaks of loving speech, which means we speak in a tone of grace by using softer words instead of rhetoric we hear in the media and all around the world. As we move into a new year, I'm hoping for a new tone. I'm hoping for a tone of love and a tone of care as we move forward into the school year. And can I just address something?
Sure.
I heard that teachers resign, teachers quit, teachers left. We had a total of 29 retirements and resignations. There were 10 retirements, the rest were resignations. Of those resignations, several of them, when I say several, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 or 11 people left to get closer to home. They had positions closer to their home position, and they decided to go to those positions.
They got positions closer to their home position, and they decided to go to those positions. Two, uh, one left, well, actually, three. One left because a husband was transferred, two left because they're fiancés, they got engaged. So I just want to clarify that some of those things that have been floating around, that, and, and of those positions, I have them here, that we replaced. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that people just didn't quit. We had two people that I'm aware of, unless somebody else has other research that I don't know of, two people that left the profession. One left to work as a life coach, and the other went back to the industry that they came from. I just met with Edinburgh, and one of the things that they said to me was, they're, they are traveling and meeting all of the school districts for student teaching, that we're in pretty good shape compared to the districts around. Really good shape. So I just want to say, I think we have a lot to be encouraged and a lot to stay encouraged about. Because I think through all of the things that we've gone through the last two or three years, I think we've come through it, and although we've had to have debates, I, different things, I still think we've done it with class and grace, and I'd like to stay there. So that's all I have to say.
Could you elaborate on the incoming staff?
Yeah, oh, I think what he was, yes. So at the induction, we had 14 teachers, and somebody had also mentioned that, you know, we were, we were replacing everybody with a lower-step teacher. The incoming teachers are bringing 83 years of experience, based on the, the districts that they're coming from. So I just want to just clarify, because I know you're getting bombarded with all sorts of messages, but at the end of the day, I believe we're all still doing the best we can, and I appreciate that.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Washington. At this time, we will turn it back to public comment, and I think we have one person that signed up, Missy Howe.
My name's Missy Howe, I have two children in the district. My youngest is going into fourth at First District, and he heard my husband and I were talking, how they had three classrooms last year, and they were going down to two classrooms this year, and that there's going to be between, about 28, 29 in a class. And he's like, "Mom, that's a lot of kids." And I invited him to come with me tonight, but he chose not to. So even going into fourth grade, already knowing that he's going to have two classrooms with that many kids, and there's still, you know, a week and a half before school starts, and, you know, you might have some kids leave, you might have some kids come. So for him to recognize that 28 and 29 kids in a class is a lot, coming from having about 20 in classrooms since he was in kindergarten, it just made my mom heart feel a little sad for him. Last year, he also receives speech, and there were multiple times that he came home and said, "I didn't have speech today because, you know, my teacher was in another classroom," you know, "filling in or subbing in." I probably let that go over a little more than I should have. I'm going to be a little more diligent this year in making sure that he's getting those services. He is going down to one time a week of receiving services instead of two, but it's just something that he needs so that, you know, he's not going to his friend Luke's every day, you know? It's Luke, not Luke. And just to pay out of pocket, it's a lot of money, even with our insurance, to get speech like at Vernon or something. So I'm really going to make note of, like, when he's not getting services and stuff, because his speech teacher was being pulled to cover classes and stuff. And with his speech IEP, I just want to make sure that he's getting what he needs, because when he started, then COVID started, and then he didn't get services, and I just, you know, it's just been a crubby, crummy time for him to be getting services and things. But I'm positive that it's going to be a good year, and I have faith in the teachers at First District, that they'll make the best of what they can, but it does worry me with class sizes being that big. Thank you.
Missy, can I just say something? I, I don't typically respond back and forth, but you brought this up in May or June, so I went and checked, and the director of special ed is there. We have had that speech teacher out of our pulling gulf all of last year, so that should not have been a reason. The only time that that speech teacher would have been pulled in after we, and this is before you came, was that if we had to have immediate coverage for like the first 10 or 15 minutes for breakfast, that was the only time, okay?
And he receives it in the mornings.
Yeah, so, but that would have been 10 minutes first thing in the morning.
He only gets like 20, 30, but it's really never full of 30.
But we would have done it while they were still doing attendance and eating breakfast and all that stuff, so. So, but we have checked that, and we've looked at that, and I'll, I assure you, when, when you first said it, I went back and checked.
Okay, I appreciate that.
So, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Any other public comment? Ron.
I'm Ron Irwin, and I just am really curious whatever happened to the survey results for the ESR funds. You know, the, the survey was put out there, and, and then we didn't hear any more about it. So I was just kind of curious whatever happened with that.
Ron, we did use that in the, in our planning, and it's, and is it up on the website? I think.
The link was sent to board members.
Okay, did we ever, but did we ever put it up for the public to see it? The links to the public to see the results? Okay. Yeah, Ron, I'll get that up, I'll get that up tomorrow, but we did use that, it was very similar results, but I'll get that up tomorrow. Okay.
Any other public comments? Board comments? Okay.
I'm Judy, been up here before.
Judy, what's your last name?
River.
In your ad?
I'm sorry, what?
In your address, please? Connet Lake. My kids go to Meville. I'm an older lady, and there's a lot of older people, and there's a lot of younger people, but, you know, our taxes are going up and up and up and up, and I'm not seeing the results of anything good coming out of this. Seems like every time our taxes go up, you people raise something, you need something, your salaries are going up unbelievably. You know, I understand you have education and all that, but let's get real, we have nursing education, we have other people that have other education, we don't get half the kind of monies that you people do. We need to start being responsible for what is being spent in this district. There's too much, saying, "Oh, well, we need this, we need this, we got to do this, everybody else is doing it." Well, we're not everybody else, we're a small district, and we have to save. And just blowing this money on this Sapphire, and I'm sorry, I do think that there's probably other UTI or UPI places that you can get something cheaper and not be stuck in a five-year, you know, year for it, for, you know, what happens if, if our country goes down and we can't pay these taxes? What are you going to do? You know, you, you need to start budgeting better, and I'm sorry, that's how I feel, and I think some of these step-by-step things, that parents don't get enough response, I don't think anybody gets enough response from you people when you discuss things, and like, okay, did that get put out to people? No, it didn't. So I'm not trying to pick, I'm just trying to point out things that are important, and in my life, too, and in my grandchildren's life. And my motto is, "Let's make a better world." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, any board comments?
I will say, I will say that, well, maybe, in response to the teacher shortage, I'll just tell everybody what Harrisburg did. They ended up shortening the workday and making the kids do their seventh or eighth period at home on their own, and that was their solution. I don't know how well it's going to go over, but at least we are well-prepared, because they have had such a lack of staff coming in, and they thought that was going to be the quick fix, so. I don't think it was a quick fix, I think it's just going to deteriorate even further, but I will say that it looks like we are on the right track, and I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.